It is seven o'clock, and I'd like to call to order a meeting of the Board of Selectmen. And we'll start tonight's evening by asking everyone to please rise for a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We had distributed the January 8th open session minutes. I assume everybody had a chance to read those. And any questions or comments before accepting them? Or do I hear a motion?
A move where you approve the minutes from the open session of January 8th, 2018 is posted.
Motion made by Selectmen Nobley. Do we hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Selectmen Spandelli. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? They pass. So we have a full house this evening. And I assume it is not just because of the farmer's market being on the agenda. And so, the Board of Selectmen, under Communications and Announcements, has posted a draft host community agreement with Mass Innovation Works. It's no secret that that's an issue that's captured the attention of folks in the community. We have a special town meeting scheduled for next Tuesday, January 30th. And so, the town manager was going to communicate to us the discussions with Mass Innovation Works and, in an effort to inform the public, as we go through this typically more low-key process, keep the public aware, both the folks here in this room and the folks at home, what our discussions have been and where we're coming from. So that's under Communications. And just so for folks here, again, who haven't had a chance to be at our meetings before, that's under Communications. We'll be discussing that, as well as just other general announcements. We'll then work through consent items on our agenda, which are pretty basic and should go relatively quickly. We'll then have a licensing discussion. And then, public comment is at the end of this meeting. And so, anybody who has any comments, whether it be about this issue, any issues in fact, they would be invited to speak at the microphone. And again, town meeting, of course, is an open forum that is scheduled for Tuesday, January 30th. That being said, Mr. Manager, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And we are in the process of, so let me step back. On January 8th, the Board voted to ask me to begin or to complete negotiations with what is referred to as Valley Green Grow, which is a nonprofit proposing to locate a registered marijuana cultivation dispensary facility at Osgood Landing. In the time since that vote, I've had conversations with staff separately and then in what I guess would be referred to as negotiations with the representatives of Valley Green Grow. And subsequent to that, we've drafted agreements, circulated the agreement, got council's feedback relative to that agreement. And what you have before you and will be distributed, we're just, if you can imagine a little bit, this is quasi imprestative, but I think a compliment to the Board. In essence, we're rolling out a legal document that has not been fully vetted, but for the purpose of folks to dismiss any questions about what's really in the agreement in principle, to outline what the business deal and other some of the provisions would be. So we are working on getting those copies available for everyone. Again, this is a draft. And we began this conversation, approval was January 8th by the Board that authorized me to do this. I was actually out of state, so this process didn't begin until January 11th. And in less than two weeks, we've been able to pull this together. And the Board should fully expect, as the community should, that after this meeting, we'll continue to work on this document. But the concept of the business deal and how it would work certainly contained within the document now. And so, I'm going to do a sort of bullet point by bullet point, review that document, and then stand ready to answer questions, take some direction so we understand, so I understand how to proceed after this meeting. I would appreciate if we could keep some of those till the end, because my guess is there'll be a fair amount of questions. Okay. So again, I've identified the fact that this agreement is between Valley Green Grow, which is Massachusetts nonprofit with principal offices at 1600 Osgood. 1600 Osgood LLC, which we know as the owners of Osgood Landing and the town of North Andover. And this is an agreement relative to the Mass Department of Public Health license operated registered marijuana dispensary, or RMD, for the purpose of cultivation, processing, and dispensing of marijuana in accordance with the regulations issued by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It is specific to 1,001,000 square feet of marijuana cultivation space identified as Building 30 and a small portion of Building 70. I think that's important as we continue the conversation, it's specific to those spaces. And this is the terms of the host community agreement. Valley Green Grow shall pay the town the sum of $5 million annually, paid quarterly in the amount of $1,250,000 for 80 quarters commencing on the first day of the first full calendar quarter after the first certificate of occupancy is issued for any part of the marijuana cultivation facility. The town, through its Board of Selectmen, will issue a letter of non-opposition to Valley Green Grow, saying it does not oppose the location of Building 30 and 70 for 1.1 million square foot of cultivation facility with no dispensing at 1600 Osgood Street. Valley Green Grow shall seek a special permit from the North Andover Special Permit Granting Authority, which in this case is the Planning Board, for 1.1 million square feet and no less or more for the marijuana cultivation facility. Valley Green Grow's obligation to pay rightens upon the grant of the special permit. The payment schedule begins upon grant of the certificate of occupancy, so typically special permit, building permit, and then after the building permit requirements are met, then certificate of occupancy. But that relates to any portion of the marijuana cultivation facility. If the Special Permit Granting Authority issues a permit for cultivation facility that is less than 1.1 million square feet, then the annual payment of $5 million shall be reduced in proportion to that amount. So if the group, Valley Green Grow, goes to the Special Permit Granting Authority, the Planning Board, and requests, as is required, the full 1.1 million square feet, and what gets approved by the Planning Board is less than 1.1 million square feet, let's say it's 25% of the total, then the payments identified earlier would be 25% of those payments. Any increase in size of the cultivation facility shall not increase the annual proportionally up to the $5 million. Payment is pro-rata each quarter until Valley Green Grow achieves a maximum goal. In essence, again, the facility will be, the special permit will be, or shall be, will only be requested in the amount of the 1.1 million square feet. If the Planning Board issues a special permit for 1.1 million square feet and the occupancy sought is 50,000 square feet or 100,000 square feet, then the full amount of the quarterly payments of $1,250,000 will be made. If the Special Permit Granting Authority grants a permit of less than the 1.1 million square feet, then those payments will be calculated on a pro-rata basis based upon the square footage permitted versus the total square footage of 1.1 million. After that point, if there's additional special permits granted, then those payments would further change up to a total of 1,250,000 per quarter. Valley Green Grow agrees that in the event that applies for license to cultivate recreational marijuana in the RMD cultivation facility, thereby converting all or any portion of use of the facility to a recreation marijuana facility, that it'll maintain a leased portion of the facility for medical marijuana cultivation, that this agreement shall survive such conversion, and the full $5 million payment of 80 quarters shall be continuing obligation. So if they moved into the road of going from medical to adult use, then a portion of the facility would have to survive as medical, and that this agreement would survive as they move to the adult use. Valley Green Grow agrees that in the event it applies for license for cultivate recreational marijuana or any other recreational marijuana license in the RMD cultivation facility, the obligation to maintain a portion of the facility for medical marijuana cultivation and to pay the full $5 million annual payment under this agreement shall be incorporated as the payment obligation in any host community agreement entered into for such a license. Valley Green Grow obligation to pay $5 million per year with payments for 80 quarters shall not be discharged or waived for any reason. However, if Valley Green Grow's license is suspended by the regulatory agency for more than one quarter, the corresponding quarterly payment due shall be deferred until the license is reinstated. Valley Green Grow shall remain obligated to pay the quarterly payments that were deferred. Such payments shall resume on the first day of the next calendar quarter. For some reason, there's a license suspension, it does not waive that quarterly payment of the 80 quarterly payments, it defers it, changes the new date, so the first day of the first month after that license would be reinstated, we begin the quarterly payments again, and we'd always accumulate to 80 quarterly payments of 1,250,000. If Valley Green Grow defaults on its obligation to make a timely payment or fulfill any other obligation under this agreement, Valley Green Grow agrees to waive all defenses to the town's withdrawal of the letter of non-opposition and the town's request to the licensing authority to revoke Valley Green Grow's license to operate the cultivation facility. The town shall have all other remedies available to it under state law. 1600 Osgood agrees that the value of real property of the RMD facility shall be treated as taxable, and 1600 Osgood shall not object to or otherwise challenge the taxability of such real property, but may challenge any assessment in accordance with state law. So all of this is a nonprofit that'll be occupying a portion of the space known as Building 30 and a portion of Building 70 at Osgood Landing. It will not contest the fact that that property remains taxable from a real estate perspective. And if there's an appreciation of value as a function of the investment in that building, and that results in increased property taxes, then that's the obligation to continue to pay those increased property taxes. Valley Green Grow agrees that all other fees, permits, personal property, and real estate taxes, including any personal property or real estate tax increases which result from improvements to the building or the land and any other subsequent valuation increase, shall remain the obligation of Valley Green Grow and any other successor property owner. Valley Green Grow shall not assign, sublet, or otherwise transfer this agreement in whole or in part without prior written consent of the town, which consent shall not be unreasonably withheld, conditioned, or delayed, and shall not assign any of the monies payable under this agreement except by and with written consent of the town. This agreement is binding upon the parties here too, their successors and assigns and legal representatives. Neither the town nor Valley Green Grow shall assign or transfer any interest in this agreement without the written consent of the other. Valley Green Grow shall comply with all laws, rules, regulations, and orders applicable to the RMD or any other AMU now existing or operating at the property in the future. Such provisions being incorporated herein by reference and shall be responsible for obtaining all necessary license permits and approvals required for performance of such work. Any and all notices or other communication required or permitted under this agreement shall be in writing delivered, goes on to say where those notices need to be delivered. Any term or condition of this agreement or application thereof shall to any extent be held invalid, illegal, or unenforceable by the Court of Competent Jurisdiction. The validity, legality, and enforceability of the remaining terms and conditions of this agreement shall not be deemed affected thereby. Where else are we going? 18. This agreement, including all documents incorporated herein by reference, constitutes the entire integrated agreement between Valley Green Grow and the town, respect to matters. Valley Green Grow agrees that it will not open or apply to open a medical marijuana dispensary facility, a retail marijuana facility, an onsite consumption facility, or a delivery service facility in North Andover. Valley Green Grow shall not use any of the town's public water supply or infrastructure in its cultivation activities. Valley Green Grow may use the town's public water supply and infrastructure for the operation of its businesses not relating to the cultivation of marijuana, included but not limited to any AMU conducting research and development activities. So the water supply, they will not use the town's water supply for cultivation purposes in the facility. By the other activities, it would be sort of the normal course of business, they certainly would. The parties acknowledge that the cultivation facility will be located in a Mass General Law Chapter 40R Smart Growth zoning district, and the town may vote to rescind such voting district. As a consequence, the Commonwealth of Mass may require the town to repay $650,000 it received when Mass General Law Chapter 40R District was adopted. If the Commonwealth requires repayment of all or a portion of the $650,000, Valley Green Grow shall pay the amount due the Commonwealth. You may recall that more than 10 years ago, when the 40R was in place, there was incentive bonuses associated with that kind of development. 40R is a residential zoning instrument used to develop more housing, in essence. There's some logical expectation that if this process moves forward and this facility opens and they're successful, then obviously the residential component of that wouldn't be necessary. There'd be further expectation, if there's not going to be residential housing on the site, that the state would logically expect that the payment it made to the town, so there's no confusion about this. This payment was made by the town, deposited in the general fund, and used more than a decade ago, wasn't put in a reserve fund or for any other purpose. It's been used, and it's long gone, I guess, as they would say. But if the state obligated the community to repay that, then Valley Green Grow would take on that responsibility. This agreement is specific to a 1.1 million square foot cultivation facility for a license issued to an RMD, registered marijuana, facility by DPU, excuse me, by DPH or any AMU approved by the Cannabis Control Commission for the same space. Any future development or expansion requiring a license or an amendment to the RMD license shall require an additional host community agreement. Further, any AMU or other research and development use which is not within the 1.1 million square foot cultivation, processing, and manufacturing facility satisfying the 15% rule under the Section 8.13.64 of the zoning bylaw should be covered by this agreement. So, the expectation of the zoning bylaw as it's currently constituted is that there is a requirement in the bylaw that 15% of, in essence, what I would call matching space, be made available for research and development. So as the bylaw is being constituted, if you're approving 1.1 million square feet, ultimately approved by town meeting, and that's for cultivation, largely cultivation, the bylaw contemplates the idea that in order, that there'd be 15% of sort of matching space of that $1.1 million for the purpose of research and development. So doing rough math, 165,000 square feet, that's close enough, of additional space for the specific purpose of research and development, whether that's in an adjoining building or in a separate building on the parcel, that would be a requirement under the zoning bylaw. This agreement, in essence, states that, since that's an obligation of the zoning bylaw, if the zoning bylaw were to pass the way it is and things were to proceed, then this agreement covers that 165,000 square foot facility as well. It would not be an additional payment or an expectation for the community beyond the $5 million that this would change. Since, I would say, communicating the position of the property owner, since it's an obligation of the bylaw to proceed in that regard, this should be incorporated as part of the $5 million. So that is the, I think I have it all. I don't, bear with me. I can read this long paragraph, but it's fairly boilerplate, quite frankly. This agreement does not affect, limit, control, the authority of the town, its boards, commissions, departments, to carry out the representative powers and duties to decide upon and to issue, deny, applicable permits, and other approvals under the state statutes and regulations of the Commonwealth, the general and zoning bylaws of the town, or applicable regulations of boards, commissions, and departments. It essentially says that, other than what's happening in this agreement, all of the departments are the function that we would normally. If there's a building permit required, the building permit has to be paid. If there's other standards set by other boards that are requirements under what their authority is, then those obligations would stay in place. I think that's a fair, I've read most of it verbatim, but not all of it. It gives you a sense of the terms of the agreement.
Okay. I'll move to the floor. Any questions for my colleagues?
I guess Section 9, another question on. If Valley Green Grow does fall behind, what is our, I mean, I see what our recourse is, that we will rescind the letter of non-opposition. What's the teeth in that? Is there actual teeth in there that would have some penalty to Valley Green Grow? And at what point, you know, do we decide that they're in default?
Well, they're in default the first time they don't make a payment on the first day of the calendar quarter. After that, from our perspective, that, you know, what we don't think makes sense is to get into sort of a debate. And although there could be some discussion of a cure period when we move forward to a final document, ultimately, the community would be making an agreement, a very substantial agreement, the party, where the expectation is that you're getting a letter of non-opposition, in essence, in exchange for this document. And that if the group doesn't meet its requirement, we don't want to be spending time chasing down why that is. We would make the agreement null and void, and we'd communicate with the licensing authority that they, which is the state, that that license should be pulled because they don't have a host community agreement. So it's possible over the next period of time that we may add a cure period, that wouldn't, is one of those things that may change, a reasonable period of time to solve the problem. But adding a penalty when someone isn't paying an amount of money just exacerbates whatever may be going on from a financial perspective.
I guess my follow-on question is, then, so once that letter of opposition is given, if we give it, that's not like the horse is out of the barn, then we can actually bring that back in? I mean, we can rescind that if there is an issue?
Yep.
And that would have legal standing with the state, that we've issued a letter of non-opposition, there's been a default, and now we can bring that, we can retract that?
We believe a letter of non-opposition and a host community agreement is a requirement to both obtain a license and to retain a license.
Okay, that's good. Perfect.
I have a question about how this is in compliance with the state medical marijuana Because I understand if I read that law, that host community agreements are limited to a percent of gross sales and capped at five years.
We would say it's not in compliance with that law. But we'd say that it isn't the intention to be in compliance with that law, that this is a registered medical marijuana facility, and they're working under the provisions of that particular statute. And that this particular agreement is specific to the kinds of relationships or host community agreements that exist in other communities under the medical statute.
I would like to read the law.
Sure.
Because I...
So just to be clear.
This is what we're referring to, is the law that came as a result of the ballot question. So this law came as a result of the ballot question.
Right.
Right. Which the ballot question was specific to commercial or retail marijuana. But it includes some medical language.
So this host agreement would be applicable at the state level if it was challenged, is what we're saying? So it was what I'm...
We believe it would be.
We believe it.
Yeah, well, there's not, in fairness, there's not, there is not clarity on a number of these different topics, in fairness. We believe that this is, by being done, this has been what was said from the beginning, that this is being done as part of an RMD under the statute that is medical. We also further believe, and again, this is evolving over time, we believe the parties would be willing to enter a side agreement that holds the owner of the property under contract law to the provisions contained in this if it was challenged and found not to be valid. And if it's not valid, quite frankly, then there's certain conditions within that, for instance, host community agreement and letter of non-opposition. If this, so if you read within this document itself, the town reserves the right, if it's determined not to be valid, to rescind the letter of non-opposition and host community agreement.
So in the case of this particular law, though?
I mean, we've talked a lot about regulations that were drafted for the Cannabis Control Commission, but this is black and white state law. So why would it not apply even to existing medical marijuana, or I should say, any potential medical marijuana?
And why would we want to enter into an agreement where we're not sure?
I'm simply answering the questions associated with this agreement. As it relates to that, we're moving down the path of what is medical marijuana. Everything in this document, there's no reference to the statute that is adult use or commercial. Because it's, I think it's fairly clear on what the conditions can be within a commercial facility or an adult use facility. Or if this is applied for, say, after the July 1 date, when those applications become, licenses become valid under the CCC, I think all agreements after that point would clearly be governed by the adult use statute. We're traveling, this agreement has been crafted in the same way similar agreements have been crafted, that were subject to the medical marijuana statute. And this is following those provisions.
So for that, to just, I guess, put that into a little bit more easier understanding for the public, if they apply for a provisional certificate under the medical law...
Yes.
And they get that, then we should, then this is reasonable to have a host community agreement under the medical law. If they don't get it for whatever reason, and they get a license under the recreational law, this is not relevant. We don't know.
And if it's not relevant, then I would assume the host community agreement and the letter of non-opposition and any support from this board would not proceed.
Again, I think for the public to, this is a state statute. So, "No agreement between a city and town in a marijuana establishment shall require payment of a fee to that city or town that is not directly proportionally and reasonably related to the costs imposed upon the city or town by the operation of the marijuana establishment. Any cost to a city or town by the operation of a marijuana establishment shall be documented and considered public record and defined by Clause 26 of Section 7, Chapter 4 of General Laws." The second part of it is, "A marijuana establishment or medical marijuana treatment center seeking to operate or continue to operate in a municipality which permits such operations shall execute in agreement with the host community, setting forth the conditions to have a marijuana establishment or medical marijuana treatment center located within the host community, which shall include but not be limited to all stipulations of responsibilities between the host community and the marijuana establishment or a marijuana medical treatment center." Again, marijuana medical treatment center. "An agreement between a marijuana establishment or a medical marijuana treatment center in a host community may include a community impact fee," meaning, in layman's language, reparations for the negative effects of such a facility, "host community, provided, however, that the community impact fee shall be reasonably related to the cost imposed upon the municipality by the operation of the marijuana establishment, or, again, medical marijuana treatment center, and shall not amount to more than 3% of the gross sales of the marijuana establishment or marijuana medical treatment center, or be effective for longer than five years. Any cost to a city or town imposed by the operation of the marijuana establishment or the marijuana medical treatment center shall be documented and considered a public document." This is a statute.
I'm answering the question that's asked. This is, we're not using that statutory reference, which came as a result of the ballot question that then became law in July. We're using the medical marijuana statute, which allows for an RMD without the same conditions. That's the process we followed as a result of sort of moving this forward as a document.
Mr. Manager, hypothetically, that statute turns out to be law. We then would have the ability, the statute you just read. If that turned out to be the restrictive law and your interpretation wasn't accurate, we could just pull the letter of non-opposition at that point and, am I mistaken?
I would expect that Valley Green Grow, and they can speak for themselves, but I would expect Valley Green Grow is already in, well, I already know, they're in the pipeline under the medical marijuana statute, they're a nonprofit, and proceeding through the Department of Public Health process. As an example, the statute you referenced doesn't reference the Department of Public Health, because the expectation under that statute is that the medical, at a time certain, will all, medical and the adult use, will all be under the control of the Cannabis Control Commission. That hasn't yet happened. We're still working under the parallel arrangement, where the Cannabis Control Commission is developing a series of guidelines to help work with the statute. And the DPH is still in the process of reviewing and approving medical-related activity. At some point, there's certainly an expectation that all of that's going to move to the Cannabis Control Commission, and therefore, the regulations they're currently promulgating. Under the current application, the particular applicant has filed under the DPH standard under the medical marijuana statute, and is following that path to be, being a registered RMD under the DPH process, being a nonprofit as an example. Won't be in need for, at certain times, moving forward for these facilities to be nonprofits, vertical integration being another difference. If a facility is approved by DPH today, they must be vertically integrated. That'll go away under the statute. But currently, there is still a DPH process in this particular applicant that has approached the town, is following the process of the current statute and that vertical integration in the DPH licensing process. So, as it relates to the conversation, as when the Board said, "Go negotiate agreement," that was done under the proviso, that this particular entity has walked in the front door of the DPH process, which existed before that statute passed, and that the terms of that agreement would be consistent with what's allowed under those. If there's a decision made when this is submitted, for example, to the DPH, if it were to move forward, and they were to say this is not valid, then there's not going to be a host agreement, there's not going to be any letter of non-opposition, and it would all sort of go away in that particular regard. Or there'd be a question under contract law of whether the participant, whether the applicant would be willing, under contract law, to provide the same kind of financial backing to their particular proposal. But at this point, the applicant is taking the nonprofit path through the DPH and not following the provisions of that statute. That's why we negotiated a deal consistent with the applicant who's come before us. If you gave me a new applicant that was coming in a different way, that would be, for instance, an... an adult use facility and clearly would be using that statute.
It just seems troubling to me that we're at this stage, a few days out, and it's full of uncertainty. Do we have a written legal opinion on this?
We've talked to both in-house counsel and Susan's here, and she can speak to that, and spoke to secondary counsel as well, and there is, there is, there is not enough clarity in the industry to, they understand the path of the RMD, they also understand this language. I don't know if there's another circumstance of someone currently in the RMD, DPH pipeline of going through this. There is no adjudicated cases associated with it. And so from their perspective, they certainly don't oppose the path we've driven, but there are questions that remain.
But there is no written legal opinion?
Nope.
So as we march forward, a few days out, we don't even know if this is, is legal. It's-
But if it turns out not to be legal, we just could pull the host community agreement, well, the host community agreement isn't legal then at that point.
But why, why is a board, would we want to put forth something that we don't know is legal, put it in front of the townspeople and say, "Well, we'll, we'll fix it if we find out it's not legal, or we'll pull it." That's, why would we do that?
I'll tell you why we do that. I think there's a very simple reason why we're having this kind of discussion right now. This is an opportunity that is time-based, right? We have one chance to make this decision. There's one path that is an opportunity right now that changes. And so, our opportunity here and, and the evaluation that we all have to make here is, do we sit here and say, "No, we don't have the answers to this, and because we don't have the answers to this, let's not go forward." In other words, we're down 10 points and there's nine minutes to go. Or, do you say, "We have faith in council, in the negotiation of our town manager, in what this opportunity presents." And if we have faith in that, yes, absolutely, I understand, this is not nailed down, but you know what? The best opportunities in life is often defined by what we don't know as opposed to what we do know. And I think that's really the challenge that we're all weighing with here. I absolutely agree. I would not, I would not want to be in this situation, but we are. We have to make that decision. And I guess I would say, just as I look at this, my trust is in the folks that have managed and gotten our town operationally to where we are today, who've represented us very well. And I think there's a lot of care on this board to make sure that, as this goes forward, that we manage and monitor this well. And I think that's why this is appropriate for us to make this decision now.
Oh, Suzanne, can you provide some light? So I, and just in the concept of trust, we don't even need to have trust because we could yank the, if the host community agreement is ruled no, or we're not in compliance with state law. It means the letter of non-opposition is pulled and they can't operate anyways.
Right. And I'd just like to address the issue of the statute that Selectman Smillody just read. So one of the things that we're doing when we're talking about this host community agreement, and this is for a registered marijuana dispensary under the medical marijuana law that's in existence, that was in existence prior to 2017. And if you listen to the way that the law was read right then, it dealt with a medical marijuana treatment center, and that definition is under the new law. And so if this were a facility that was applying for a license for a medical marijuana treatment facility under the law that was passed in 2017, then yes, I would say that law is applicable to it. But this is not, we're not entering into a host community agreement, we're not potentially entering into one with a medical marijuana treatment facility as defined by the 2017 law. What we're doing here is make, is negotiating with an entity under the previous law, which doesn't have that particular restriction on it. So I just wanted to clarify that, that there's a lot of confusion, you know, the law is evolving. There is some laws, there are some provisions in the 2017 that are going forward and some that I would say, or if you look back, this is a registered medical marijuana dispenser, it's not even defined in that law. So that's one of the reasons why we would say-
But it says repeatedly, marijuana establishment or medical marijuana treatment center.
So this-
This is not going to be a marijuana establishment, 1.1 million square feet.
So this, the agreement, so you asked the question as to whether or not that particular statute prohibited this agreement. And one of, so and what we're saying is, is that since, there are two laws that are in existence right now, and we're trying to piece out which is, what we're, what will be the effect of those laws. And this agreement is with a registered medical marijuana dispensary, an RMD as defined under, and it's chapter 94(c). And what you're reading is under 94(g), and there's a separate definitions and licensing process through that. And eventually, everything will merge, but that's not the case. It hasn't happened yet. The, at the last date that that will be is December of 2018, and that hasn't happened yet.
Again, it hasn't happened yet, and we're marching on-
Well, that's why, that's why this agreement is valid at this point.
Can I respond, or just my own opinion? So, Selectman Smillody, I guess, I mean, yes, we're rushed in this and in all of it, right? It's not, it's not our choice, the proponents, you know, put to get forth the town meeting. So yeah, we're rushed. And in my opinion, I would prefer to go forward with a very detailed, which I don't, we jumped right into questions, I don't think we gave enough credit to the amount of work that was put into this and the amount of provisions that are put in here to protect the town. So I think, you know, and kudos to the team that did this, because it is very thorough. And I think going forward with this, I would prefer to go forward with this to town meeting next week than with nothing. And if we go forward with nothing, then what do we have? We don't really have an opportunity, what, at this point. I mean, at least, at least this gives us a guideline for what we're looking for. And it's a, you know, it's a significant amount of money that would be paid to the town, as well as safeguards to the town that says, if that money's not paid, then there's a way out. If it's, if this is deemed not valid or does not hold up to state level, there's a way out. So I think the work was put into this to ensure both some significant benefits to the town as well as safeguards. That if they are not met and they can't be met, then there's a way out. So I think that's an important distinction, you know, it's not, rather than going forward next week with nothing and not knowing what we'll have, we have something, a well-thought-out, thorough document that gives us a good guideline on what we have potentially to do.
Again, I just need to repeat, I hear what you're saying, Dicky, but it's still filled with uncertainty. And that's usually not the way government works. Government should be- (laughter) Well, maybe not all the time, I'll give you that. But, what-
I don't think we want to take a poll.
I don't think we have to.
All right, I'll give you all that. Yeah, that was good, that was good.
But to reiterate, I mean, what I think I just heard our town council say is, inherently, this is legal under the marijuana, medical marijuana statute of years ago. And that is what the applicant has applied for a license under. If they don't get the license under that and they have to go for a retail, I mean, a recreational license, it won't be under the same statute, it'll be under the recreational statute, and this won't apply, we'll have to do something else. But what they're going for right now is an RMD, medical marijuana license, registered marijuana dispensary license, and this is valid under the RMD laws of 2014 or 15, or whenever that came out.
Just to add one piece to that, if, as, moving forward, if the facility, a portion of the facility wanted to operate to, under the adult use or recreational statute, that would require a separate host community agreement.
It would, it would not.
It would. Absolutely would.
Which is-
And that would follow very specifically-
That's exactly what I-
Yes. If, if they were to proceed and require that, because they were moving down that road, it's very clear in the regulations that if they go to the CCC seeking, under the adult use or recreational side, a license to grow under that provision, then all these rules do apply. And that would require a separate host agreement from this host agreement. It's part of the reason the provision exists within the agreement that we indicate that they must continue to operate a portion of this facility under the medical. Because we believe when we, if the group goes down this road, and let's using example, says, you know, 25% is going to be medical cultivation and 75% is going to be under the adult use, and this agreement says, well, as long as you did what you had to do, which was apply for 1.1 million square feet, and you received that approval, we're going to receive payments, even if we have to enter a second host community agreement, that's limited by the new statute. Because you're going to be required to continue to operate some portion of that building as a medical facility. And under the terms, the only way that payment gets prorated is if the special permit granting authority doesn't give them approval to use the whole facility, not because the applicant or property owner decides to use less than the full facility for medical purposes. So their voluntary decision to go down that road doesn't alter the fact that it'd be obligated under this agreement. We also believe there's some strength under contract law to hold them responsible for, outside of the statute, contract law, hold them responsible for the provisions of this agreement if there was some question of challenge. And we would explore that first before coming to you with whether or not to rescind a host community agreement.
Question for about the details as opposed to whether or not this holds up. So for, like, water usage, for instance, what are the mechanisms in place to make sure, because they are allowed to use some water, what are the mechanisms in place to make sure they don't actually violate that agreement? Are we going to have-
Well, the infrastructure piece is a little easier than the other, and then we meter on the end of those infrastructure pieces to make sure that the metering is specific to the use. So I can't speak today as to the number of meters that are on the facility, but typically the way we would do that in terms of limiting or monitoring would be to attach meters to the systems that support those assets that we, that we normally would control, and therefore would give us some indication of whether or not there was a use beyond that. And obviously, there's no question, there's tremendous amount of work to be done here, meaning that even if it is approved at town meeting and they get their license, there's a special permit granting process, pretty detailed one, based on the bylaw, that's the least out there. And obviously, a process of, none of this waves, as you read the document, the obligation of the fire department to determine if there's the right fire suppression systems, the requirements of the building inspector to make sure there's code, the inspections of our water and sewer staff to make sure that they're meeting those other obligations in terms of other requirements. None of that is waived through this. This is, in essence, a business deal with some other provisions.
Any additional questions?
So we have work to do. I just, there's no question this is not done. What I think you should expect is it's not going to change in terms of the substance of what we've talked about. But again, it is, it continues, remains under review, the timeline was, was fast. I'm not uncomfortable with the timeline in the sense of the, what I'm calling the business conversation, but certainly, I want to make sure that, that the right eyes see this. The property owner has, and Valley Green Grow representatives have a right to comment on this. What I can, I certainly will give you an update. The board will have to decide if it wants to approve the document prior to town meeting or not. It's on you. It's your decision in terms of how you want to approach this as it relates to the community. But I would expect over the next couple of days, we'll continue to sort of chew at this a little bit and make some, some revisions, but I wouldn't expect them to be substantive. Unless you ask me or direct me to do that.
Is there anything, so, would there be anything that compels us to sign a host community agreement once this is rezoned?
Say it one more time, one more question.
Would we ever be compelled as a municipality to sign some type of host community agreement? I don't mean the details, but if an applicant were to come to town because we have zoned for it and ask to, or apply for a license, could we just ignore them and choose to never sign the agreement? Or is there something in state law that compels us to have to recognize them and have to work with them and have some type of agreement in place?
I mean, Suzanne may have better answer. I don't see any, any, it's a requirement of the agreement. So when they apply, let's assume it's under the newer statute, when they apply, they need to include a host community agreement. And if the board chooses that it's not going to approve a host community agreement, then anything is open for suit. So I guess someone could challenge the fact that the legislation doesn't say that you can't, or what are the conditions? I don't read in the statute, you know, it can't be unduly withheld or conditions like that, but-
No, nothing.
There's nothing that seems to do that.
Yeah, and in fact, in the licensing process, the licensing authority asks the town whether there's anything that would prevent them from entering or from locating there, and whether the town is in agreement with them, with a dispensary or a medical establishment locating in the town, and that's the requirement for a host community agreement. So agreement is an agreement of two parties agreeing to enter into a contract.
So we- Regulations where it requires the town to act affirmatively, there's some indications within the regulations that they're going to send notices out, and the town needs to be aware of those notices, because if we don't respond on a timely basis, they're going to proceed as if the town has given tacit approval. So some of the regulations put a little more obligation in some of those cases on the town.
So we have an agreement that is financially very generous, addresses points that were made at last year's town meeting and subsequent meetings before this board when it comes to concerns with water or delivery of marijuana. And we have the option, if for whatever reason this doesn't hold up in court, or I shouldn't say in court, if the legal interpretation is different than what we're operating on as far as assumptions go, we can just pull the letter of non-opposition because there won't be an existing host community agreement.
I think that's correct. They seem to go hand in hand.
Okay.
Just one final question. 20 years is a long time, right, for agreement?
Yes, it is.
So was there, you know, was there any thought about having it renewed every, like, after five years and maybe revisit the numbers? You know, $5 million today, to me, is a real lot of money, but in 20 years, that could be pocket change, we don't know. I think it'll still be a real lot of money.
Discounted it.
We said as a-
It's on the, it's in net present value, so I-
I think that's a fair point. You know, oversharing a little bit, it's an expectation that the town, we don't know where this business is going. If it's, if it's permitting goes through a process and the town votes and that's the direction it heads, then, then we want it to be extremely successful, right? In the end, we don't know, right? This is a, this is a new industry, so we don't know. From our perspective, it was important to make sure that the dollars made a meaningful difference in the community. And so, that was built in a little bit to this discussion of length and what the real rate would be today versus another year. Should it increase in value? Well, we wanted to make sure internally that the highest dollar value happened at the beginning, so we received that benefit right away. Because quite frankly, if for some reason the business is a 10 or 12 or 15-year business and it can't sustain, we achieved more this way in the short term, because otherwise the dollar values would have seen an increase over time. But the uncertainty over time of business operation, any business, quite frankly, declined. So we view this as more, it looks level, but to us, it's more front-end loaded, and that was intentional, because like, if I was dealing with any new business, any incubator business, and they wanted to do this with payments, I would want to do this with payments, where more money is upfront. So the goal was to achieve more of the dollars upfront, and if it sustains for 20 years, it's $100 million in addition to property tax valuation increases in the result. But if we had done it in a different way and reopened, I think you would have seen the first five-year deal be far less lucrative than 25 million. And in this case, it's 25 million in the first year, five years. So we would have seen a lower dollar value and then had to negotiate up. And I think that's, we would have seen, from all the numbers that have been thrown out there, I think you will find that this deal in the first five years is higher than anything you've seen written, posted, tweeted, whatever, communicated in any other fashion. And so, the reopener, I think, would have put us in a position, speaking candidly about the process, where we would have received less than the first five to 10 years. And we didn't think that was in the best interest of the town.
So, again, we're not taking a vote on this this evening. This is something that we wanted to open up so that the public can, here and at home, be able to have an opportunity to learn about what we are discussing with a potential company.
So the options are that we don't take a vote this evening, or that we take a vote at our next meeting, which is just before town meeting, which is in a very small room that is not open to the public, but there's no way people could fit into it. It's quite small, unless they gave us another room. So I'm a little bit uncomfortable with the transparency of that vote, so.
With a vote that hasn't yet been posted, or, we haven't discussed the date, it could be after town meeting.
Okay, that's, I'm just making the point, that I think something of this magnitude needs to be totally transparent. No, I don't think anyone, any one of us wants to be accused of-
We could conceivably have a member of the public come up tonight and throw out a suggestion that we hadn't considered before, or protection that we might want to include. And so, again, this is not, the negotiation process is not done.
So I, just to sort of piggyback on that, if it is the expectation or deliberation of the board that they have any interest to execute an agreement before town meeting, then I would strongly recommend, in fact, work to move, relocate your meeting to a space more appropriate to have that discussion. And also work with- And also work with NAcam to make sure that in some way or another, we broadcast that discussion, because I think, I think you all agree, but certainly Selectman Smedili is correct. It's the kind of conversation that should happen at, it's going to be a duly posted public meeting, but not in one that's in our normal venue where very little is discussed. So if it's the board's interest as we leave here to want to do that, even if it's an expectation it might happen, then we can start working on a venue which may even be larger than this and not so crowded and provide that opportunity for folks to be there. So we would work on that. Can I ask you two additional things myself? One is I'd like to see if we can, not for long conversation, but simply an acknowledgement from the property owner that what I've identified as the terms represents in large part or substantially the terms, some acknowledgement in the public that that's the case by some representative. And two, I'd also like to comment on the, and have the owner do the same, that the owner has agreed, although not in this agreement, in long conversations with the Department of Revenue, they wanted to avoid terms like donations and these kinds of agreements that sometimes reference, even if they're well thought out, donations to third parties. So you don't see that in here. It's a relatively clean document. It's X amount of dollars in exchange. But the owner has generously agreed that although it's outside of these agreements, he would proceed or continue with the donation promise he made in other settings. And they may want him to comment on that or someone representing them, but I'd also want an acknowledgement so there's no confusion that I'm not talking up here, having negotiated with myself and/or Suzanne, and that there were other parties there, and this generally, you know, within reason matches the, what we agreed to. I think that's important to put on the record for the folks that are here.
I'd extend that brief courtesy, just to confirm whether or not those are accurate, because of course, we want to make it to public comment.
That's attorney Michael Rosen.
Being brief, yes and yes. Thank you, Mr. Rosen.
Thank you.
If you would like any more information, feel free to-
The yes and yes was good. It was really good.
It was-
Just to clarify.
We just wanted clarification, Dr.
Jeff Goldstein, 224 Foster Street. You did a great job conveying the essence of the agreement. We also made a promise to do something which was create the North Andover Community Fund. So North Andover, yes, incorporated in the 1600s has never had, to the best of my knowledge, has never had a community philanthropic foundation. That's something that always bothered me. Boston has it, many communities do. And part of this group, even though it's been removed from the agreement, we will maintain our commitment to fund the North Andover Community Foundation, which will be started after town meeting, to the amount of $1 million per year for 10 years. And that commitment, you know, we had discussed about, we're not withdrawing it or moving back, and that will continue.
Now, that is not in this agreement, just again, clarifying, that's not in this agreement.
This is an independent community foundation with an independent board, and our attorney will be designing and writing up the bylaws of that foundation.
Thank you, Dr.
Thank you.
The reason was, just so everybody knows, the reason it was excluded is towns cannot make donations to nonprofits where as a tax-exempt entity and a government entity, we cannot make donations. So it could never appear on the town's balance sheet. And that's why for, just to get out of all that confusion, we removed it completely, but certainly we brought it up through these discussions.
Okay. Drop on playground.
Yes, so Ms. Berzlaaf was heading up that project. This was the, what, some number four project, third project in the CPC-funded playground renovation master plan, of which we have 11 playgrounds, all of which will be updated using CPC funding. This particular allotment for this playground, our most used playground in the community, the CPC was generous to fund this project by, to tune of $200,000. With Ms. Berzlaaf's leadership, we communicated with the public about the desire to want to do that, put out some information. We had on a couple of different meetings, you know, 13 to 15 different residents show up as we needed to make decisions as to what the product would ultimately look like. All of those residents were people whose families actively used of the playground. They had great feedback. It was really sort of an exciting thing to listen to them, because they really, they enjoyed the playground a lot. They were highly involved in making decisions. Additionally to that, a survey was issued to the community to get feedback on certain aspects of the playground, play structures and so forth. Gave them some choices about what was out there as options, and we came down to sort of three primary designs. Nearly 500 people responded to that survey, close to 400 in the first less than 24 hours. So we got great feedback from the community. Used that community to narrow the choices down to two, and Laurie went back to the committee with those two choices, and it was consensus as to which proposal was the one that was accepted. So you have caught both, those two are really the two from different angles. We've posted it on social media, the town's website, all cool, all within the budget, the $200,000 budget that we have, and it's great. So we're going to reinvigorate that playground. It includes some fencing that the town's paying for as well, and some benches and a whole bunch of different things, some really neat play structures. This will be, so that's been approved. We have worked with the vendor to identify the courtment. We're all, you know, heading down that path. Both the committee and the community, based on the responses we received, want a community build here. They think it's a great opportunity for the community to get together over one or more weekends in the early spring and start to work toward putting up the new playground. And so we'll communicate further, sometimes in the future, about those actual dates, but I think, bless you, bless you, you're close. But we'll proceed in that regard. It's a really exciting project. I want to give Laurie Berzlaaf, she met with the group a lot, she was down at the site a lot, she worked with vendors, and in the end, what we have is a really fantastic project. This does kick off the fact that after this exciting project, in each of the next three rounds of CPC funding, I'm going to seek a double allotment of funding so that we can escalate the pace in which we complete our playgrounds over the next three and a half years, so that every playground in the community, every public playground, all 11, will be completely restored or rebuilt over what works out to be about six and a half to seven year period, which is really exciting, good stuff.
So what's the expected end date of ribbon cutting for this one?
Yeah, we're going to have to wait a little bit for weather and a little bit to see how we can get out there and first clean the site and how long it takes for the community build. Our goal is to get it just after the weather breaks and before people would actively, this park is so actively used, as you know, we don't want to be down for a long time, so we have to work a little bit strategically to try to get out there at a time where the weather just breaks, but we get people out on a weekend or two to assemble it. So I don't have an exact date, a little bit, that will depend upon weather.
Sounds great.
Good job, Laurie.
Good job, Laurie.
April would be better, but yes, one of those dates.
My kids were in the office and they saw Laurie's oversized board, and I think that my daughter thought it existed now. So thank you, thank you, Laurie, for doing all of that hard work. So any other communications or announcements from the town manager or members of the board?
I have one other item that relates to this. So we became aware late last week and confirmed today, and I'm trying to look at the email quickly, that the Department of Public Utilities has opened an investigation into the N-Grid's reaction, response to, and the issues associated with the massive power loss in North Andover and in the Merrimack Valley. Obviously, I believe we were impacted the greatest, certainly Austin Andover, nearly 96% of all our residents were without power, some of which for four days, which, given the fact that there were issues of oxygen and, you know, issues of folks being shut in was, you know, really, really bad circumstance for a lot of our residents. I know this board, and I communicated loudly that we just didn't think that the nature of that storm was consistent with what we would have thought was 96% power outage from that. We contacted the governor's office, they contacted the DPU and a process started. N-Grid was required to comply to a series of questions or issue a report. DPU has read that report, but decided to take the next step, which is to hold a hearing to look into exactly N-Grid's reaction, what could be done differently. And our goal in the long term is, you know, N-Grid's a long-term partner, right? We know that, they come before us sometimes for pole removals and changes, and it's not always as smooth as process. But in the end, they are a major utility and they're going to be here for a long time. What we expect is for them to treat our residents in a way that these kinds of circumstances don't happen again. There are going to be power outages, right? An enormous number of people, or substantial number of people in North Andover have generators. I think we know why, right? Yet there are times it's just not acceptable to have power outages so long. So we're happy that DPU has decided to proceed with the hearing. They've decided to gain information at a public session in North Andover, even though the event affected the entire region. I'll put that information out publicly, I think I have February 15th, which is a Thursday, I have to double check, I'm sorry, I'm trying to catch the email. And that's going to be at the middle school. And so we'll put that information out to the public. Anybody that was impacted by the power outage of that storm reveals generally that N-Grid's response was not, was intended. The DPU will be in town listening and gaining that information, so in the end, they can decide how best to proceed relative to taking any actions against National Grid.
Well, as somebody who weathered that four-day outage and had more than a few neighbors dealing with it, I really appreciate it. It's a challenged relationship at times, but one that's part and parcel, so I appreciate that. I would like to make one note if I could. Our students at the high school last Thursday participated in the DECA competition, the regional DECA competition, which is Distributive Economic Clubs of America. Basically, it's 4-H for business. And Danny Oberlander and several other teachers from the high school have really brought this program along in the past seven years, from just a couple of kids participating to we had this year, over 200 of our students participating at Merrimack. There are over, almost 900 students in the region participating. Of that, we had a record number of kids who qualified for the state finals in Boston. We have 81 out of almost 200 kids who competed. We're going to be competing in the second week of March, and last year, we had six kids that went to the Worlds. So the bar is high from last year, they're already above it at this point. So again, just my congratulations to all the students and our school, and this is really neat to see how things, given the opportunity, can really grow in our community. So good luck to them all.
Anything else? That being said, we'll move on to consent items. And so I'll move right into the acceptance of a donation from Elizabeth Armstrong, who is a regular donor to our police department. She's made a donation of $250. Do we have a motion to accept that donation?
So moved.
Motion made by Selectman Valancourt, seconded by Selectman Smedili. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye, all opposed.
For the letter of thank you, of course, to go out to the Armstrong family.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the appointment of an alternate to the Old Center Historic District Commission, and I will yield to the Appointment Subcommittee.
Yes, we would recommend Lorraine Belcito as an alternate to the Old Center Historic District. She lives in the area, is very eager to get involved, and it was great to meet her and discuss her interest, and we're happy to recommend her for that appointment.
Motion made with approval.
Motion made by Selectman Smedili, seconded. Seconded by Selectman Nobily. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye, all opposed. Thank you, Lorraine. Do you want to give your spiel, or?
Sure, I'd like to thank Lorraine for her commitment to serving the town and the Old Center Historic District Commission. I'd like to also thank all current and past, and looking around this room, there's many, many current and past members of boards and commissions in this room, so you truly are the heart and soul that keep this town going, so I'd like to thank all of you for your service to the town. It really makes it a great place to work, place, work, play, learn, and live. So thank you. Get them all out there.
Next item, we have the acceptance of a grant in the amount of $13,155 from the Massachusetts Office of Disabilities. In our agenda, we have a note explaining what the planned use of this is. Laurie, you were involved with this, I don't know if you want to explain, I have no problem going forward, but I think you deserve credit. You know, you went out and you got these $13,000 for the town, and we're always grateful.
Yeah, so this was a grant round released by the Massachusetts Office on Disabilities for FY18, and we decided to try to make town meeting and town documents more accessible to our hearing impaired and visually impaired residents, so we're going to use the money to purchase a Braille printer so that we can print the warrant and any other meeting minutes or town documents that they request, we can do that. And also an FM audio system that will be at the high school, and residents can check out a receiver, so it helps you hear better. And it can also be used for different events that are in the auditorium, so it's a great addition. It's also required by law.
It's good that we got the state money.
We have one, but it's not really working very well, so.
So what's that? Now that's $200,000 in state funds that you've gotten just this fiscal year so far?
Oh, I don't know.
Laurie has become, in seriousness, our de facto grant writer. A lot of communities don't have them. Laurie has taken on the charge, and I haven't tallied up the amount, but my guess is it's, I think it's far north of that. It's a substantial amount of money, certainly well into the hundreds of thousands of dollars that the town has received, because Laurie has been sort of at the point to do that. And it's going to be good, and so we very much appreciate that.
Thank you, Laurie.
Thank you, Laurie.
Yeah, look at that. So, but do we want the money? That's the question. So do I hear a motion to accept that?
It is required by law.
Yes.
Now reject it, no.
Motion made by Selectman Valancourt, seconded by Selectman Smedili. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye, all opposed. Thank you again, Laurie. Next item on the agenda is, we do have, I know it says the Assistant Town Manager, but I see that we have our Assistant Superintendent Jamili and School Committee Member David Torrisi to perhaps approach the front of the room to talk about the waiving of fees for our brand-new kindergarten facility that was approved at last year's town meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm glad you guys accepted that donation, because we're going to ask for some money back right now.
That's great.
No, seriously, I'm joined by Jamili, Assistant Superintendent to the schools. Just wanted to come in, first of all, in advance, say thank you for what I hope is a favorable vote in a second, but also kind of give you a quick update on the school building project. As you know, I'm chairing the School Building Committee. Town meeting last year approved funds in the capital improvement plan to build the new kindergarten, add 16 new classrooms, with the overall goal of reducing class size at the elementary school level. We've been working really hard. As some of you may know, we awarded a contract to Triumph Construction back in December. We've been negotiating with them, we came to an agreement with them, and now we're moving forward. I want to personally thank the town manager and Assistant Town Manager, as well as Steve Foster, who, you know, have been with us the entire way, have been nothing but supportive. I thought it was important to come, because when we go, when we run our school committee meetings and we say thank you to the town, usually there's not too few people there to see it. It's good to have a lot of people here tonight. But I wanted to make sure people understood that the schools and the towns are working hand in hand. This is not, this is not a school project. This is a school and town project. And that, I think, is very rare, when you look at, you look at some other communities in the surrounding area, and you see the collaboration here in North Andover between the schools and the town. It's something that I'm very proud of, it's something that I like to sing the praises of, and I know the town manager just two weeks ago at the Chamber of Commerce was talking about that specifically. It's a very rare thing, I think. So we are here to ask you to waive the building permits and the other town permits as well. We are on a very tight budget, so our budget is predicated upon that. And just in closing, I want to say that the superintendent understands this as well. Her recommended budget, which we hope to approve this Thursday, is geared primarily, if not completely, to opening that school in August. All our new, our new growth in our school budget is directed in that vein. It's going to be a full-function school, there'll be no shortcuts taken in that regard, so. Did I cover everything there?
In the spirit of yes and yes, I would say I echo all those comments, I have nothing to add.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
Legal approval.
Motion made by Selectman Smedili.
Second.
Seconded by Selectman Keen. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye, all opposed? These are waived.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Make it so. So moted B. It's my last.
The next item on the agenda is the North Andover Farmers Market Planning Committee requests to close First Street. I will recuse myself from this vote, because, yes, I serve on the committee, but I serve on the Board of Directors for the nonprofit that oversees the committee. So I will pass the gavel to Mr. Valancourt, and good luck with that.
Good evening. So I am Hillary Stasnas, on the planning committee with Chris Allen as well. I think you all may have received a letter from the planning committee about our request, but for the benefit of all those that are here watching at home, if it's all right, I would like to go ahead and read it. In- "In 2017, you supported our efforts to host a farmer's market in North Andover's downtown. We are proud to report that your faith was not misplaced. After 16 weeks, the work of over 100 individual volunteers, including many of those in this room, the participation of 36 vendors, and the partnership of Lowell Five Bank and the North Andover Merchants Association, we executed an event we believe made North Andover proud. Last year, you approved our request to close off a portion of First Street to accommodate the weekly market. We are writing to ask permission from the Board of Selectmen to again block off a part of First Street that runs from where it meets Main Street down to just before the access drive, located to the left of the building at 15 First Street. We ask that the closure run from 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM on each of the 17 consecutive Sundays starting June 17th and running until October 7th of 2018. While the market would be only open from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, the hours we have requested reflect setup time and breakdown times for all of our vendors. This location allows us to host a farmer's market right in the center of town. It creates both an opportunity to attract more people to our downtown while also offering convenience to many residents, especially those living in senior housing located just yards from our site. Additionally, brick-and-mortar businesses have benefited from the increased foot traffic. Please let us know if any additional information is needed to grant the request." Thank you.
Okay. We have the request to close Main Street, I mean, close First Street from Main, the Main Street exit, entrance, beginning Sunday, June 17, 2008, through October 7, 2018, from 7 to 3. Let me just say that, you know, I visited this farmer's market many times, and I think North Andover has some great traditions of some outdoor activities that bring the community together. We have the sheep-sharing event in the spring. We have Fourth of July. We have National Night Out. We have the Fall Festival in the fall, that all make use mostly of our common, and then the National Night Out at the middle school. But this quickly became a signature event for this town. The first weekend that it was up and running, it was incredible, the number of people that were there, and just, not just shopping, but just people getting together and, you know, gathering as a community. And that continued for every weekend thereafter. I think, I don't think there was one weekend where it wasn't packed. So congratulations to you guys for doing that. It was a fantastic success, and I think it really did add a lot to the downtown and to the town of North Andover. So, you know, great job.
We appreciate that. And I just have a couple of comments. Now that he's out of the room, I can speak behind his back, because I just want to make sure that everyone is aware, is the reason we have a farmer's market really is because of Phil DeColigierro. There's no doubt about it. He pursued the funding. He gathered the team. He brought in all the town officials. He navigated the vendors. He sent out newsletters. I had to write these down as I was thinking about them. He served as our general manager. He negotiated the printing ads, the bags, the aprons, everything. He brought in the schools. It was his idea to say, we should bring the schools down here so that they can have an opportunity to bring in some funding for their programs, which was hugely successful. It was wonderful to see the kids there. He made us profitable. He was always there. He was always, always there, from the crack of dawn until we managed to break down. And we got it done in under an hour, I think, one time. And the weekend that he decided to take off was when his wife decided to give him a baby. So that was the only weekend that he took off, was Labor Day. And it was Labor Day for the DeGelio family. So I just wanted to say thank you to Phil and for his efforts, and also to some of you on the board here that I know, I mean, if it wasn't for your truck, I don't know how we would have done a lot of it, many weekends. Thank you, thank you, thank you for your help. And Regina was there, and Chris. And, I mean, it was really significant. It was wonderful to see you and all of the town officials that came down and actually participated in the market, just because, just because they just happened to be there. And they started coming every week. There were a lot of people, and I'm not going to name them all, but it was wonderful to see. And just to echo Mr. Teresi, the union between the schools and the town, that kind of participation, we really saw at the farmer's market. When the schools started getting involved, it was, it was really, really wonderful. And I hope to continue that and maybe escalate on that, and do as much we can to give back to the schools as much as their volunteers have given back to the market. So thank you all for the opportunity.
Okay. So do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded. Any further discussion?
Just echo my thanks. You guys worked so hard. I was obviously down there some working, but not nearly.
You were lifted. We saw you.
What you guys were doing. And I mean, it was an incredible work effort, so I just wanted to thank you.
Another reason, though, for an early summer, you know?
Yeah.
Okay. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? All set? Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
If someone could yell Mr. DeColigierro to return.
So are we all just going to clap when he walks in the door?
No, don't do that. Don't even let him know what happened.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Give him back the gavel.
That was for you.
So the final item on the agenda. So we have, the next item on the agenda is an open meeting law complaint filed by Frank Ragoneisi against the Board of Selectmen. Memo's been included in our packet from Suzanne. And Suzanne, our town council, is here to discuss it.
I'll just address that from the board. Under, when an open meeting law complaint is filed, then the Board of Selectmen must review the complaint and then answer it within the time period. And so you're also permitted to delegate that responsibility to file the answer with the complainant and the Division of Open Meeting Law. So if you would like to authorize me to do that, I can file that tomorrow. And I can just sort of review quickly the reasons for the response. And in the first instance, a complaint has to be filed within 30 days, and the complaint was filed untimely. It was after the 30-day period. And secondly, I think that the complaint must have been, might have been confused as to the timing of the agenda items. He was complaining that language was eliminated after the agenda was posted, and in fact, language was added after the agenda was posted. So I think that eliminates his complaint in the open meeting law.
But in our case, all amendments to the agenda were made more than 48 hours before the meeting.
Yes. Yep.
It's just, in that case, it was an interesting timing, because the meeting was on Tuesday, I think, that week, right? Is that correct?
Yes.
Is that the week it was Tuesday?
Mm-hmm.
So the agenda didn't have to be posted until the end of business on Friday. I think that's what the timing worked out. So I think there was just some confusion about the bottom. But all of the, all of the material was filed well more than the 48 hours required.
So I will hear a motion.
I'll move that the Board of Selectmen authorized Town Council Suzanne Egan to provide a written response to Frank Ragoneisi regarding the open meeting law complaint he filed on January 8, 2018.
Second.
Motion made by Selectman Keen, seconded by Selectman Nobley. Any discussion?
One thing, can you send it to all of us just to see it before it goes out? Of course, we can't respond to one another, because then we'd be in trouble. I'd just like to see what your response is.
Absolutely. The, the response has to be filed tomorrow, the written response tomorrow. So if I can send it to you in the morning and you can respond by noon, that would be very helpful.
And all separately?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Hearing none? Thank you.
Thank you.
So the final piece of the, this portion of the agenda is the Town Manager's Annual Performance Evaluation. Each year, the five members of the Board of Selectmen complete a separate evaluation for each of us regarding the Town Manager's performance. It's become rather boring, because each year, he seems to do a consistently good job representing the community. And so I did provide that to the Town Manager today. They signed a copy of that evaluation. I know that copies were provided to all colleagues in the Board of Selectmen. I don't know if anybody had any questions or issues that they'd like to highlight, not necessarily issues, but perhaps compliments that they'd like to give to the Town Manager.
Let's move on.
No? No?
I think it's fair to say that, again, AAA bond rating, and I think it's a comment I used last year, says it all. He does a fantastic job with the town's budgeting, and we've all benefited greatly. Our reserves are up. We're not, I heard a little bit of a rumor that we were in financial trouble, but I'm like, ooh, how did that get out there? So we are not in financial trouble. So again, congratulations on, again, great budget. Town's in really good shape.
I'll second those comments. Thank you for all you do.
Yes, thank you.
I appreciate your willingness to accept feedback. I think that that's, that's what makes it extra productive and helping guide us when we want to tackle a problem and help us see outside that box, that sometimes we might be confining ourselves within. So, thank you, Andrew.
And I believe that is available on the town website, right?
We post it tomorrow.
Yeah. So unlike all of us who are in private industry, Mr. Mail, his review is public information, and it is on the website, so you're concerned.
My kids read it. It's great.
So it is not yet approved, though. I would hear entertain a motion to approve the Town Manager's.
Chair, I'll move that we approve the review rating, or the performance evaluation of Town Manager Andrew Mail.
Second.
Motion made by Selectman Valancourt, seconded by Selectman Keen. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Thank you again, Andrew. So that is the end of our consent portion of the agenda. I hear a motion to move into licensing.
Mr. Chair, I motion that we move into licensing.
Motion made by Smedeely. We hear a second.
Second.
Seconded by Selectman Keen. All in favor? Aye. And licensing.
Okay, we're now on licensing. For those of you who may be new to a Selectmen's meeting, we also serve as the licensing board for the town of North Andover. So any licensing questions or any requests for licensing come through this board as well. We have a separate chair for that board, as we do for the Board, for the Board of Selectmen. So I sit as chair for the licensing board at this point. So on the agenda tonight, we just have really one request. It's a multiple-day request from, not multiple, well, multiple individual days, from Merrimack College, which is very common that we get requests from Merrimack College. So they have three events, and they are requesting a one-day wine and malt license for the following events at Casher Hall. Liberal Arts Academic Reception on Thursday, February 1, 2018, from 3:30 to 6:30. Health Sciences Academic Reception on Tuesday, February 13, 2018, from 3:30 to 6:30. And Business Academic Reception on Wednesday, February 28, 2018, from 3:30 to 6:30. We have favorable correspondence from police, fire, and the building inspector. The police do require that the servers at these events are tip-certified, and that they purchase their alcohol through a licensed retailer or wholesaler of alcohol. So all of that is in place. So I'll hear a motion.
Motion for approval.
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
There's an order.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? That motion passes. Okay, that's the only item we had on licensing, so I'll hear a motion to move out of licensing.
Mr. Chair, I motion that we move out of licensing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are now out of licensing.
We are back. So there is no old business, and there was no new business before us. At least not posted new business. I don't know if, I don't think anything popped up in the meantime. So we are at public comment, and so I, again, I wanted to be respectful of the folks here. Everyone who waited, I assumed it was because perhaps they wanted to weigh in or at least hear some thoughts expressed. And so I know that as members of the board, we're eager to hear feedback from the public. And so given that this is the last meeting in this room, at least before town meeting, I would, it's not really an orderly way to do this. It's more be courteous to each other and respectful of your time. And of course, this isn't a back-and-forth. It's an opportunity for you to provide a comment. And so I will throw it out there that it's a first-come, first-served, and all you have to do is express your, or state your name and state your address.
Good evening. My name is Jeffrey Sheehy, 35 Copley Circle. This is a letter that I wrote to Mr. Goldstein, to Dr. Goldstein. I'm the president and owner of Widdermore Company located in Lawrence, Mass. Dear Dr. Goldstein, it was a pleasure meeting you and having the opportunity to learn more about your project. To give you a little background on Widdermore, our company processes perlite and vermiculite for a variety of applications in three major market areas, including horticultural, construction, and industrial. Both are natural minerals, non-toxic, can be easily composted, and are approved for organic use by Armory. Widdermore is the oldest continually operating perlite processing plant in the United States. A third-generation family business, we've been located in Lawrence since 1985. We currently have 30 employees, with the majority of them residing in the communities of Lawrence, Haverhill, and Lowell. Although perlite is suitable for use as a hydroponic growing media, it has not been formulated into a commercial block-type product that offers the convenience of rock wool blocks, the current alternative. We are pleased to hear that Massachusetts Innovation Works Chief Horticulturist Harry Van Dogna feels that the properties of perlite may be preferable to rock wool and other growing media for cannabis cultivation. We believe that the horticultural market for perlite as a hydroponic grow media is substantial, and we welcome the opportunity to work with your innovation team to develop a perlite block that can be used for commercial hydroponic cultivation. We are already in the process of obtaining several prototypes of perlite blocks from a Belgian industry affiliate that we would like your team to evaluate for use in cannabis cultivation. Massachusetts Innovation Works, planned hub of industry experts, access to specialized equipment, testing facilities, and forward-thinking approaches, as well as the use of the site for beta testing, provides an ideal environment for pursuing this R&amp;D and commercialization opportunity. Widdermore Company has been an active member of the Perlite Institute since 1974. The Perlite Institute is the worldwide industry association for perlite processors and miners. Through Widdermore's affiliation with the Perlite Institute, the research, trials, and testing to be conducted at Mass Innovation Works could have a profound positive effect on the worldwide perlite industry. We believe that this project be successful, our company will enjoy significant growth and expansion due to new market accessibility. We are hopeful that this opportunity will materialize soon, enabling us to expand high-end employment opportunities in our Lawrence facility. Finally, my wife and I, as residents of North Andover, feel this project would be a great opportunity for the town. Sincerely, Jeffrey Sheehy. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Sheehy.
My name is Justin Shaka, 45 Belmont Street. I'm the co-founder and CEO of Revion. We are a medical device manufacturer that is developing technology that identifies brain disorders and brain dysfunction. Our leading product is identifying vision loss, leading cause of vision loss in children. And we actually manufacture down the road here, 25 Commerce Street here. And I want to attend this evening's meeting to just voice my support for what I'm seeing happening down at the, down the road here for this marijuana facility. One of the technologies we're working on right now is actually identifying a way to, a device that identifies chemical impairment. So certainly, with a lot of states legalizing marijuana, one of the issues that we're looking at is how can law enforcement, how can physicians, how can, how can anybody, you know, even the operators of the forklifts at Home Depot or Walmart, how can you identify if somebody's impaired acutely with marijuana? And that's technology that we're working on pretty aggressively right now. And that's technology that we're working on pretty aggressively right now, and we are doing, as I said, our manufacturing here in North Andover, and we see a huge opportunity to continue this innovation, because right now across the state, a lot of innovation is happening, and we are based down in Boston, and I have been attending quite a few events for, for the medical marijuana industry, and Nixon, Peabody, they might be able to help with any legal questions, I guess, if they're any outstanding. They've been doing a great job of really navigating this field for a lot of startups, and I've seen a lot of certainly concern from, from people about this industry, but what I see is really a lot more optimism and really the positive side of things. One of my colleagues is a ovarian cancer survivor, and right now what she's doing is, she has started a company that's trying to standardize dosage, because right now it's really challenging for individuals to know what's the right dosage for conditions that they're fighting, again, for the medical use of marijuana. And that's the type of technology that I'm seeing and the innovation I'm seeing out there. So again, I certainly respect that there's a lot of confusion and concern with this topic, it's, it's new to a lot of people, but I think Chris nailed it, I think there's an opportunity in front of us to really lead the way here, and it's really exciting about the, the opportunity that's down the road, because the R&amp;D component really can set everybody, or set this town apart from everybody else that's doing things across the state. And again, going back to that Nixon-Peabody session that I went to recently, one of the things that people are challenged by is finding where is that hub where the R&amp;D could happen? Because really, there's a lot of innovation happening, but until there's somebody who can say this is the center to come to, it's really going to be piecemeal. But again, I think North Andover has a great opportunity to, to take a lead in that space, and again, I'm proud to be doing our manufacturing here in North Andover, and I hope we can continue doing that for, for many years to come. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Alexander, and I am from 133 Pleasant Street.
Do you mind giving your last name, too?
Oh, Alexander Barabo. Sorry.
Thank you.
I'm 26, and I have a degree in chemistry. My motive, my motive, my motivation to speak tonight comes from the opportunity presented to us and by the potential for scientific and medical breakthroughs that opportunity holds. Long denounced as a gateway drug, the actual use and benefits of cannabis through medicinal use bears no resemblance to the reefer madness of yesteryear. Non-intoxicating cannabis derivatives such as the substance CBD would be the main goal of research efforts into lifestyle-improving drugs. Perhaps you have family or friends who you know suffer from chronic depression or anxiety, more visible disorders where drugs can come with serious adverse effects. Or perhaps you have family or friends who suffer from almost invisible autoimmune disorders, which are lifelong and require expensive medications to suppress their immune system. These are conditions where cannabinoid derivatives may improve people's day-to-day lives with less expense and/or fewer adverse side effects. Finally, I would like to stress my own position. Five minutes down the street from Osgood, I could have a decent-paying technical job within my field. Many young men and women like me could be on the cutting edge of cannabinoid pharmaceuticals without the need to commute or move closer to Boston. This facility could set roots for future generations of North Andover residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Alexander.
My name is Richard Romano, I live at 480 Ray Street. I'm a townie, born and raised, I grew up here, my family has been here since 1961. I want to say that I'm a cancer survivor and I'm, I'm very much in favor of this project. I was at the town meeting last, last go-around, and I was a little bit upset that it didn't get passed, but I think Dicky and Rosemary were the ones who said we need more time, and I was completely wrong, we did need more time. And I appreciate the effort that you guys put in in the last eight months to get this done. I know everyone put in a lot of work on both sides, and I think we've done a great job to get to where we are, and I appreciate all the work that you guys did to get here. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Debbie Hope, 370 Great Pond Road in North Andover. Our family's been doing business in the Merrimack Valley since 1985. We have raised two children here in North Andover, I've been a Girl Scout leader, Cub Scout, den mother, and my children have played on the facilities at Osgood, laser crayes, sports on the playing fields. And for decades now, we've seen this building empty, and it would be wonderful to see it come alive. Dr. Goldstein has seen and explained to me the wonders of medical marijuana. I have many friends across the country that use medical marijuana in their cancer.
As you have.
And the innovation we could have here, it should be a world-class research facility, and to see this place come alive again, and the benefits that are already promised to North Andover could keep us floating along as a wonderful community that we are. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hope.
My name is Jim LaFond, and I live at 329 Osgood Street, and I'm here to speak basically in opposition, vehemently in opposition to the project, and also, I guess my major concern is with the way the Board of Selectmen, the Planning Board, and other town officials have gone about it. The one thing, I understand the benefits of medical marijuana, I don't think anybody disputes that, I don't think anybody wants to see a cessation of research and development toward medical marijuana, but as far as I can tell, the, none of the articles that are being proposed by the town, and there is nothing really being proposed by any cannabis Your article, for instance, Article III doesn't prohibit the cultivation of recreational marijuana, it fully allows it, any type of cultivation of marijuana, just the retail sale and some craft cultivation. Likewise, the Planning Board article, if I'm not mistaken, has no provision in there to prevent anything, I mean, it could be 100% recreational growth, according to that article. Now, at the last meeting, I, they're trying to tie the 15% research and development to, you know, the growth for recreational purposes. So it's kind of odd for me, you know, I get these flyers that everybody's getting, with only, you know, four pages, the word marijuana is mentioned once, the word "not" in emphasizing "not for sale" here in North Andover is in uppercase letters to emphasize that. Everybody here is talking about medical, medical, medical. Mr. Mailer talks about the application for the host community agreement being under the medical marijuana. So I asked the board the simple question, is there any restriction in any of all of this policymaking that is being done to prevent anything, to prevent us from just being a 100% recreational marijuana facility town? And I haven't heard that. And I think it's disingenuous that both a potential proponent, and again, there is no application yet, that we're doing all this work. I can't remember the town ever lobbying so aggressively on behalf of a proponent of a project, other than maybe when we did the 41R district for the same property several years ago. So I think it's disingenuous that no one has come forward to do a true benefit-cost analysis. What is the cost to the Town of North Andover, both economically and socially? And have you done your research before deciding that this is good policy for North Andover? We know we're going to get $5 million. I'm not sure that's a good number. Desert Springs, California, if I'm not mistaken, and correct me if I'm wrong, their law says $10 million if you do the math for a million square feet. Speaking with a legal firm in Denver, Colorado, they feel that most communities have shortchanged themselves in the initial negotiations, and they're saying more like 15 to 20 million dollars per million square feet of cultivation for recreational purposes, which is, I think, really the direction we're heading. I was at the open house a few weeks ago that, that was put on at 1600, and I specifically asked that question. I think the team was a little bit evasive, saying that the market will dictate which way it goes, but I did speak, Mr. Reagan was candid enough to say that in Colorado, in general, right now it's about 50/50. Their, their medical marijuana law also was put in place a few years before their recreational laws, and it's trending more toward recreational cultivation and recreational consumption. So again, I ask you, you know, have you done that research? At the Planning Board, I was surprised, I said, you know, what does the Chief of Police of North Andover think about this? What does the Fire Chief think about this? What does the Superintendent of Schools or the School Committee think about this? How about the Board of Health? No one's been solicited. We haven't asked.
Mr. LaFond, I watched that meeting, and it was replied to you that, in fact, the Board of Health was visited by the Planning Board, and then they reciprocated by attending that meeting, a subsequent.
Mr. DeCollegiero, no opinion was rendered.
But you had asked, to ask them to give feedback, so there's not currently a mechanism for the Board of Health to officially weigh in, it's not within their purview, a local Board of Health, but I.
Mr. DeCollegiero, can I continue at the floor?
To be quite honest, I just wanted to respond back here, you have a large audience, and I don't want there to be any misstatement of facts, because I know not everyone can watch every meeting.
Everybody's going to have the time. So I started calling, and I've called several of the department heads, and if they're here, you know, respond. They've never been asked for, to develop a position paper, and nothing has ever been developed, so how do we know what the costs are? What is the additional cost that is going to be borne by the North Andover Police Department? Or the Fire Department? Or anybody else? I did some research, and in Colorado, I found out that, for instance, since 19, since 2013, when recreational marijuana was legalized, there's been a 62% increase in marijuana-related traffic deaths. No one wants to investigate that 62% increase? Or how about the fact that in youth marijuana, and we all say it's not going to be sold in, in, in North Andover, there's been a 20% increase in past-month marijuana use. The national, in Colorado, youth ranked now number one in the nation for marijuana use. They were 2000, they were number four after medicinal use was allowed in 2011, and before that, they were number 14. So it appears that they've always been on the high side, but there's no doubt that the use among youth is increasing. It's also increased significantly among college students and among the adult population as well. Emergency room visits have increased 49%. You, you know, I can go on and on, it's a 180-page report, and I will spare you that. I think town meeting is a more appropriate place. Even interdiction by Highway Patrol has increased 37% to stop marijuana from leaving the state. U.S. Postal Service interdiction has increased 427%, people trying to mail it out of states. 37 other states were the targets of that marijuana. So, you know, again, I ask, you know, why haven't those who oppose marijuana been given the benefit of research that you've done for the proponents to determine whether that $5 million that we may receive outweighs the cost that we're going to potentially realize? And it's just astounding to me that no, no one even seems to have an interest in knowing what those costs are going to be, particularly when you increase, I mean, are we going to feel as good about this when that first marijuana-related traffic death comes back? And, you know, we're going to put a gold star on our head and say, yeah, that's our pot, Town of North Andover allowed that. I just don't think it's a good idea, and I ask you to reconsider your position. Thank you.
Jim, can I just ask a question? I mean, very good points. Just questioned twice, you said lobbying and you said research. What are you referring to? You said that this board is lobbying for this project. I mean, to me, a lobbyist is a paid proponent for a project, we're, obviously, we're not getting paid to lobby for this, and we're not, I don't think any of us really have, you know, done any of that, so I'm just, I want to clarify what that means.
I'm sorry, Dick. You are getting paid. The town is getting paid, and you're our town policymakers and representatives.
I'm getting paid by the town to represent the town, I'm not, if you're telling me I'm lobbying for the, for the project, you're insinuating that I'm being paid by the project to do something, and I'm not.
People can lobby for free if they don't, I can, I can go, I can, I'm lobbying you right now, and I'm not getting paid to do it.
All right, so.
I'm not insinuating anything, and so you don't have to be so defensive.
Well, because there's been a lot of stuff online lately about us, you know, and it's offensive to me to, to people think that, you know.
Well, Dick, answer my question, then, how come you, none of this research has been done? How come you haven't represented me and like-minded people like me by saying, geez, what could be the detriment to the Town of North Andover? What could be the problems?
I have been looking into it, Jim, I've been doing.
You guys have been working at this stuff for quite a while. I mean, why not? It never came to anyone's, never came to your, through your thought process, that geez, I wonder if anybody will get in an accident because of marijuana use? And never thought about asking the Chief of Police? The Chief of Police said 40% increase in traffic-related marijuana accidents.
Just a little fun if I can, because I've spoken to both of those. Excuse me, ma'am. As someone who's spoken, speaks to both chiefs on a regular basis, certainly know that you've called them, just to put it again in, I think, perspective, both chiefs' response. The Police Chief was identifying very clearly, as you have, and I think through the statistics, the statistics you provide are not a function of one community's marijuana growth or sale, it's a function of legalization of marijuana. So the statistics you provide in many states, and that's a sort of broader philosophical question, right? So as soon as Massachusetts legalized marijuana, there's an expectation, even supporting, I support the data you provide, that there's going to be some changes culturally and socially as a function of that decision. This community, you know, that was, that's a statewide vote. What the chief referenced was his experience, I think, generally supporting your data, was that there is an expectation based on other states, that because of the legalization statewide, not specifically to North Andover's actions, he should expect that there's going to be, in North Andover and in other communities, probably more DUIs. I'm not sure he confirmed the death count, but he said he expected more DUIs. I think we should expect that. I, I don't think the data itself is, I don't think we need to debate the data, I think we maybe can accept some of its honest face. I just want to be clear that what the, both chiefs said, one was specific to the fact that legalization itself has ramifications, and I think that's part of your point, and their perspective as it relates to specific impacts of this facility was not notable, because they were talking about how does any, how does any business affect the police or the Fire Department? Do you need more staff? Those kinds of questions. And in both cases, their position is not as it relates specifically to the operation of the facility, but certainly there may be some social changes that's going to happen as a function of legalization. I think we should expect that.
Well, Mr. Mailer, that's understood, but that's not your purview, and that's why I directed the questions at the Board of Selectmen. The Board of Selectmen are our policymakers, and you're right, that overlying philosophical question is a policy question.
Yes.
Does North Andover want to flood the state of Massachusetts with the amount of marijuana that can be grown in a million square feet, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365? And when you're making that policy decision, I think they should have had, they should have researched, they should have gotten that data. And if we're going to go ahead, I mean, if, if they did that, and if they can in clear conscience say, we're willing to accept, North Andover is willing to accept our responsibility, our part of the state, which is going to be, according to the people who are running the project at 1600 Osgood Street, it's not only going to be the biggest one in Massachusetts, it's not only going to be the biggest facility in the country, it's going to be the biggest one in the world. And I think we have a tremendous obligation.
Thank you, Mr. LaFond. See, there's a line forming behind you.
Can we just clarify that the rules of the public comment is that we, we respect the public's right to come and make a comment, and it is not the right time for us to respond. I feel frustrated that, I have lots of responses to a lot of these points, and I don't want the public to think, why are they not responding? So I just want to reiterate the rules, since I'm new sitting up here this year, that we're not supposed to be responding at this point. I'm respecting everyone's time and right to come speak, and we'll have dialogues offline with people who engage us as we have, we've been communicating, and I just feel it's necessary to state, so that everyone realizes why we're not responding.
Thank you.
Right? No, no, but I mean, I, I want to respond, and I don't want people to, to wonder why we're not responding.
Ed Lynch, 137 Haymeto. I was waiting for somebody to kind of tee up my point for my comment, and I didn't realize it was going to happen quite that fast. I stood up, I've been to a lot of meetings, because I was really on the fence about this topic for a long time, and so I wanted to really educate myself. I have talked to many of you, I've talked to the Chief of Police, I've talked to other people, and I've talked to a whole lot of, I've done a whole lot of research. And what I came away with, which I, I mentioned at the Planning Board meeting, was is people in town are really confused, and they continue to spew misinformation, and it's a problem, because I think if everybody had the facts, they really could make their own decision for or against, but unfortunately, there are so many, if you spend any time on social media, which I did this last week just to, just to see how it went, I'm exhausted. I'm exhausted by the ignorance, the misinformation, the fear, the stupidity, and bullying, I'm really exhausted from all of it. So what I suggested to the Planning Board, which I sent to Jean, and they all agreed it would be a good idea, is why don't you guys create a document that, and I sent her my top 20 questions that people are confused by, and it could be the top 10 questions. And it could be the top 10 questions people are confused by because they are confused. And co-author it. Co-author it with all of the town organizations, the proponents, the opposition, everybody approve it and put it out. Because I think what's happening is people are scaring people. People are throwing out stats that have absolutely nothing to do with whether this facility is open making pot or it's not. It's closed and empty. Those numbers are going to be exactly the same because pot is legal. So I think we need to really educate people so that come the 30th, it doesn't become hours and hours of people throwing stats and misinformation up that really aren't true. They have a document that is co-authored by the town officials, whoever that is, the opposition, the proponents. It really would be helpful because it is a confusing topic. So I leave you with that thought. Jean took all my stuff, she has all of it, all my notes, she can get it to you.
Thank you, Mr. Lynch.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Andrew Furman. I'm at 5 Crossbow Lane. Just a few comments. I've watched this process for the last seven months, both from your board as well as the planning board and others. And I want to thank you for your time and your diligence. As I've gone around and talked to town residents, I, I've come across mainly three themes as to why people oppose this. One, it's a rush job. I think anyone that suggests this is a rush job is being disingenuous to your board as well as others. All of your meeting agendas are publicly available, all your meeting minutes are publicly available and all of your meetings are open to the public. As elected officials, it's your responsibility to communicate and to educate and to talk to your constituents. If you haven't been doing that over the last seven months, then the onerous is on you. The onerous is also on us as town residents to get those meeting agendas, to get those meeting minutes and to be present at these meetings. And I would offer to you, whether we have this special town meeting on January 30th or in May, this room will not be packed like it is until the meeting before town meeting. I offer to you, anyone that says this is a rush job, have simply not been paying attention. And the onerous is on us as citizens to take part in that, as much as it's on you to educate folks and to talk to your constituents. And I know many of you on the board have because that's how I became aware of this seven months ago. Over the last seven months, I've struggled with the social aspect. I said that, as I talked to town residents, there are three reasons. One of them is people feel it's a rush job. I feel that's disingenuous. The other is the social, I just don't like marijuana. And the third is marijuana's bad. That kind of dovetails with the second. And I can understand that. Several years ago, we've had three votes in this state on marijuana. When the first to decriminalize marijuana was first proposed, I voted no. I don't like marijuana, I don't like cannabis, I don't smoke it. I don't support it. I thought it was a gateway drug. So I voted no. I believe that vote was in the 2008, 2009 era, could have been a little later. The second time marijuana came on the state ballot was to legalize it at a medical use. That time I voted yes. And it wasn't because I saw that cancer patients, that epilepsy patients, that other patients needed this drug to survive. Over the time period between the two votes, I thought about something. And the fact is, the reality is that the black market is supplying marijuana to anybody who wants it. I suggest that anybody of us in this room right now could get marijuana in the next 15 minutes. And it's not currently being grown at 1600 Osgood. It's not currently legal for recreation use. However, I've offered to you that any of us could get it in the next 15 minutes. Walk out the front door, walk 300 yards down to the right. You can get it in the next 15 minutes. And what you're getting in the next 15 minutes is from the black market. I won't go into the statistics as to what the crime rate is that's supported by the black market. I will offer to you that the substance folks are getting on the black market not only contains THC, the compound that provides the euphoria and the high, it provides other, much more harmful substances, LSD, rat poison, the list goes on. That is why I opened my eyes and decided that the regulation, the legalization regulation, let's control and regulate and monitor the cultivation and distribution of cannabis. That is why several years later, when we came to our third vote, the legalization for recreation adult use, I voted yes. Again, I'm not a user, I don't care to use it. But the fact is, any one of us can get this drug in the next 15 minutes. Let's regulate its cultivation, let's regulate its use and that's what this board and particularly the planning board has done over the last seven months. If the last seven months is a rush job, then I guess we will have to disagree. But again, the planning board has worked very diligently to regulate and to protect the town's interest. The current legal marijuana industry is currently estimated to be at about $6 billion. In 2021, it's estimated to grow to in excess of $24.5 billion. In 2017, the state of Colorado received $247 million tax revenue. That's estimated to be in excess of $500 million. The state of Nevada received in excess of $120 million in tax revenue. The state of California's estimated tax revenue, it's estimated to be over $1 billion. And earlier this evening, we had some comments from our town manager about a host agreement that's been negotiated to provide the town of North Andover $5 million. And that doesn't include the building permit fees or the foundation. I ask for your support and favorable action for the articles in, in, in favor of 1600 Osgood. Again, Andrew Furman, 5 Crossbow Lane. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Charles Trafton. I live at 137 Salem Street. I'm a local businessperson, have three children who have been through the North Andover Public School System here, born and raised. They're all under the age of 21. I'm also a member of the Finance Committee for the town of North Andover and I'm a member of the OPEB Committee of the town of North Andover. OPEB stands for Other Post Employment Benefits. And I'll get to that in a second. I'm speaking to you tonight as a private citizen. My views are, my personal views don't reflect those of anybody else, including especially my fellow committee members, both on the Finance Committee and on the OPEB Committee. I wanted to answer a couple, answer to a couple of issues I heard brought up earlier tonight and I wanted to state a couple of facts and I wanted to state a couple of opinions. First is the question of, is anybody doing the analysis or running the numbers on the financial impact of, of this project? And I would say yes. The, the many members of my committee and I on the Finance Committee have spent dozens of hours personally, both in committees and on our personal time on the weekends, doing research, attending rallies both for and against this project, spending a lot of time in the last seven months to do the homework needed so that we have, as the volunteer citizens that report to you on the financial effect of projects like this and of the town overall, we give you an accurate picture and description. Again, I do not speak for the Finance Committee, I speak for myself only on this and all matters I'm talking about right now. I'm a hedge fund manager professionally and a, a risk manager that has navigated the waters of many financial crises, navigated them well. And I'm an expert in financial analysis and financial due diligence. And if there's one thing you might know about hedge fund managers, that we love to find the shyster. And we like to uncover fraud, we have accurate BS meters and, and we like to do our homework. And I've done my homework on this topic over the last one year. And I can tell you my personal opinion, I'm not repping and warranting this, you're not paying me to take that risk, but I believe this project is in good hands. It is being operated by world-renowned experts in this rapidly advancing science, both here and abroad, both here and from Denver and Amsterdam, all over the world. There are Fortune 200 companies willing to commit dozens of millions of dollars to this project. It's in good hands. The, the principles behind this, that developers have an extremely liquid balance sheet and positive cash flow and are very risk averse financially. I believe they are in it for the long haul to continue to invest in this project should it need additional capital, time and attention down the road because not all of these things go off on time, on budget. There is a gaping hole in the, in the discussion about this project in this town, there has been from the start, and it's the OPEB liability. In August, it was announced that the town was forming an OPEB Committee to review and analyze the OPEB issue. OPEB is the future liability the town has to pay the health premiums of town retirees like teachers and policemen and firemen. And these are promises made long ago. And as you know, healthcare premiums have been rising for decades. During the Clinton administration, HMOs became a thing because we had runaway healthcare inflation double digits in the early 90s. It was more than 25 years ago. So fast forward to today, we have public information, you can get the financial statements of the town or any of these documents off the internet, they're publicly available, a total OPEB liability of $109 million. We have less than $1 million set aside against it. And this $109 million liability grows by millions per year. And today, the town is in good financial condition, in my opinion, through the leadership of the people in front of you. It's doing well. We have a little bit of cash flow left over, we have budgeted conservatively, we're paying down some debt, we're putting away a little money for the side. You have to understand, these unbelievable times will not last forever. Everybody's doing well right now. Dow 26,000, lowest interest rates in a generation, that will not last. And so I, we, we, the OPEB Committee was formed just recently, we had our first meeting. First meeting was to define the topic, what should we do about this and, and, and next steps. And, you know, after 60 minutes of deliberating about this and going through the financials, this is a generational challenge for this town and thousands of other towns like ours. We have a AAA rating right now. But starting in fiscal 2019, we have to start recognizing that OPEB liability on our own balance sheet is going to blow a hole through our equity to the tune of 100-plus million dollars. Tonight, the, the commitment that I heard blew me away. Eighty quarters, there are still four quarters in a row, I had to tap the guy next to me, four quarters in a year, right? Eighty quarters of $1.25 million minimum. Just a few weeks ago, I was in the initial OPEB Committee, we were all trying to calm down. What can we do about this? This is a generational issue, this will never get fixed. You either have to cut the benefit of the retirees, or we have to raise taxes, or we have to find some new business to move into town. How will we ever do that? And it, it's remarkable to me that once you get over, you know, the marijuana issues, is this legal, should we be doing it in this town? The, the economic discussion has to get to the next level about how are we going to attack the OPEB issue? Because that is the next big issue in this town after this Osgood thing hopefully passes, knock on wood, I'm a strong supporter of it. The next issue to cross, though, is this OPEB challenge. And they are directly linked and it would be an incredible shame if we voted this down and in a few months, we're back here discussing this $100 million hole we have in our balance sheet. How could we ever fix that? Well, you have to put the, the two issues together. So I'll leave you with this. My fellow OPEB Committee members, I think it's public who we are, we're listed on the, on the internet. The one thing we thought we could do after that meeting is to spread the word to our neighbors and our fellow town citizens that this is an issue, we are researching it, how to figure it out and how to deal with it without breaking promises and without stepping on prior agreements. What can we do? And so this was the best forum I could think of to let you all know that this topic is front and center. And we're all open to discussing it and please reach out to any of us, we're all trying to make our voices heard. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trafton.
Thank you for giving us an opportunity to speak. My name is Daniel Di Filippo. I live at 47 Sutton Hill Road. I'm speaking to you tonight, I'm asking for favorable action on this, on all the articles that support the revitalization of 1600 Osgood. I'd ask for you to think about the positive benefits to the town in terms of job creation, in terms of economic activity in the town from these people who work there, the benefits for the town after we pay our bills with that extra money. We can add teachers, we can add policemen, we can add firemen. I just want everybody to understand that as the law stands now, we're all cultivators here in North Andover. So you can vote against, if you, if that's how you decide, but every one of your neighbors can grow. Every one of us is a cultivator now. Whether you take that opportunity or not is up to you. But that's the reality of the law. And so what we can't do is innovate. We can't bring in the scientists. Now, I'm in business school right now and I take a class called, it's called World Clusters. And a lot of you will be like, what is that? That's what they're teaching? I didn't know what it was either. I'm like, what am I paying for? What happened to biology and my math? But it's called World Clusters and what you learn is these innovative new businesses, instead of the old way of business of hiding what you do and not sharing with anyone, these are clusters of people, doctors, scientists, and Massachusetts is filled with them. Bioscience, education, you can even argue that we're a sports cluster with the success of our sports teams. However, I encourage you to research what an innovative cluster is because you won't complain if that's in your town. Okay? So I know it's a topic that if you're against it, that's, that's great and that's fine. But understand that there are medical benefits and that there are differences. And understand that the proponent is not trying to sell retail marijuana to our children in this town. Also understand what the law is in Massachusetts and regardless of what you vote on 1600 Osgood, people will be having marijuana delivered to their home in North Andover. It, it's legal. So a place in another town will provide it and it will be delivered to North Andover and your neighbors will be allowed to grow. So understand when you vote no, what you're really voting against and when you vote yes, what you're voting yes for. And I think in, if we vote yes, in a very short order, we're going to understand the benefits far, far outweigh whatever perceived negatives there are associated with it. Thank you for your time.
Hi, I'm Kathy Santoro, 8 Mill Pond with Andover. Brooks School, Class of 85, Registered Pharmacist in the state of Massachusetts. Moved my family here in 2001 in the Sergeant School District, educated them K through eight. I was a pharmacist in town for quite some time and currently, for the past seven years, have owned a business in town. And I, I can tell you that I'm, at this point, neither for nor against this project. I'm here tonight to learn and try to kind of gather more information and it's great to hear all of the pros. And I, I, I think one of the pieces that was missing for me was the philanthropic piece, which I was very glad to hear tonight, that there was a philanthropic component to this project, which I think would be a great piece for the town to know because I think a lot of people don't know that. And the conversations that I've had with people... And the conversations that I've had with people seem to think that that's a huge piece that's missing. What is happening to all this money? We're taking in all this money. What are we doing on the positive side to show our kind of appreciation for this? But I have to say, one of the things that I heard tonight, and feel free to comment, is there's a lot of pros, a lot of people for this project because it brings a lot of money to the town. And that's where I have some concern, okay? And I hear kind of a lot of conflicting conversation about this. People want this because it's a lot of money for the town. But yet, what I heard earlier in the very beginning of this conversation was, if we're not able to accept this money, for whatever reasons, legal or otherwise, we may decide not to do this project. That's what I'm hearing as a resident. If the money coming in does not meet the requirement of the current law that may or may not apply, that maybe this project isn't as rosy as we all think it is, and we can pull the agreement and decide not to agree to this project. So my question is, if there's so much pro and innovation and positive on this project, why are we hanging a price tag on it? And so, that's what I need a little more clarity on, is what is the price tag, and what is it exactly for? And, you know, people may laugh, and, you know, obviously, the deck is pretty stacked here with proponents. Again, I'm not for or against. I'm still learning. And I think that there's a lot of people in town that are still learning and want more information. So that was a little bit of a contradiction that I heard tonight. Would anybody agree with that? I mean, I don't know. I want a little more clarification as far as, what exactly was that conversation about? If the money that we're receiving, whatever that dollar is, whatever appropriateness of that money is, isn't going to be coming our way because maybe the state doesn't allow it, then are we or are we not doing it? And what are the reasons why? So I just offer that as kind of a public comment for those people who may or may not have made a decision yet on this project. And so, the next, you know, kind of follow-up question to that is, where is that money coming to the town going to go? Is it going to go 60% to the school department? Or is it going to go to these liabilities that we have that are pending and outstanding? And how does that all work? And I think that information, although maybe not available in a timely manner for the vote, may have a significant impact on how people vote. So that's just my comment. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Pete Hall. I live at 191 Cara Drive. First of all, I'd like to thank the board and Mr. Mailer for the work that's been done so far on this. My big concern is not with the articles. My big concern is with the agreement. And I think I listen to Chuck, I listen to Andrew, and I hear people talk about markets that are in the billions. And we have a draft agreement that the town gets $5 million a year. And I spent 10 minutes before the meeting and found one town that would get $10 million for a $1 million square foot facility. And I would just ask that the board continue to do its due diligence on what would be available for the town for an operation that would be the size that we're talking about down at 1600 Osgood Street. So I'd like to say also that I'm a cancer survivor. I have an autoimmune disease. I have a sister Debbie that's a quadriplegic because of MS. So I have lots of reason to be in favor of things like medical marijuana. But Dawn and I have also raised three kids in the town, and it's a great town. And I want to make sure that we get what we deserve in this agreement. And I'd suggest that maybe that we need to do a little more research on that and come up with an agreement that's a little more fair. Thanks very much.
Good evening. My name is Isaac Farm, 101 Mill Pond. As a background, I have over 35 years of experience in R&amp;D management, product management, strategic business development, working for international OEMs in life sciences, medical device development. Probably, I could speak about a number of issues from different perspectives, but I'll be very concise, which is usually difficult for me. And just to say briefly about a vision component, you know what vision is. And I have a vision of a future where there is a hospital setting and hospices where terminal cancer patients have been alleviated from their pain and suffering, like many of the cancer victims know. Same could be said for the countless US military service veterans who suffer from debilitating effects from PTSD. Former military men, myself, who participated in war decades ago in a different setting, I can fully relate to their suffering. The time will come when sufficient progress will be made. The question is, when will that take place? I take my full trust in the judgment of innovation leadership of the state of Massachusetts, which really trailblazes the world in different domains of biotech, R&amp;D. Just witness go to a number of startups within Cambridge domain, as well as supporting infrastructure of biopressing manufacturing. Similarly, I place my full trust in the judgment of town leadership to elucidate the details, which are beneficial to the business development of the opportunities that are presented to the town. Last, but not least, I place my full trust in the judgment of residents of North Andover who can see past biases and preconceived notions and vote for the future to facilitate the visions I've planned above. Thank you.
Hi, Charles Trafton again, 137 Salem Street. I've heard this $10 million, we should be getting $10 million a year.
Only because we have such a large...
Okay.
No, I'm saying we have such a large audience here that, in fact, I'd like to give everybody who'd like to speak a chance.
Okay. Well, Palm Desert in California is getting $10 million a year. They're taking over the entire town. It's nothing like here.
Board of Selectmen, my name is Dan Leary, 26 Andover Street. I am a member of the development team, and I just wanted to add this because it is kind of a recurring question. Folks that want to learn more about the project will be having our third open house on Wednesday evening this week. It officially kicks off at 7:00. A lot of folks come at 6:30. Lasts about an hour and a half. And it's our third one. The first two have been extremely successful. Question and answer often turns into a dialogue. It's packed with both proponents for the project, opponents to the project, and people that just want to learn more because they haven't made up their mind yet. And because the first two have been so successful, we'll also be having a fourth one on Sunday from 1:00 to 3:00 in the afternoon. And we really invite anyone that wants to learn more about this and ask questions to come out and meet the team. Thank you.
It's time to change the subject. Donald Stewart, 52 Prospect Street. You know, 90% of people out there, their minds are already made up about this, the town meeting. I've heard everybody talk tonight, and they all have good points. But they got to realize that town meeting, you're getting three minutes to talk, and that's it. You're not going to change people's minds in three minutes. So, I mean, it's going to be a large crowd, like I said, but there's, you know, if there's one thing I learned tonight, I've been here 77 years. I didn't know you could buy drugs on Ashland Street or Clayton Street.
Rick Shaughnessy, 17 Wiley Court. I've lived in North Andover 20-plus years. My parents have been here all but 10 years of their lives. My grandfather was Personnel Director at Western Electric. He was on Mahogany Row. My dad closed the building for Lucent. He turned off the lights and closed the doors. I worked in that building doing IT work for several different companies in there. I'm a tenant in the building. I want to see the building come back to life. She needs to be doing something. It originally was manufacturing in Building 30, offices in 20, and labs in Building 21. The manufacturing space is a big, huge, over-engineered space, designed for making things. Lots of electricity, lots of water, lots of controls. It's all there. It's too much for most industries that are available in Massachusetts nowadays, most of the world. That building is so over-engineered that present buildings are manufactured with stats one-third, some of the statistics on that building, for electrical use especially. Where it suffers is its IT infrastructure. You can understand this probably. The whole building is 10 megabit. When Lucent left, they took all of their more advanced stuff into their space and left us with a 10-meg network. If this project goes through, that entire building, not just Building 30, but Buildings 20 and 21, are all going to have to be rewired. We're talking tens of thousands of feet of fiber, hundreds of thousands of feet of copper that are going to have to be laid, and all the equipment associated with it. That's going to generate jobs for high-tech people. Thank you.
Mr. Manager, if you have anything you'd like to add under the Town Manager's Report?
I will leave the rest for any questions the board has. I'll address a question since it was asked to that, not as an interaction, but as a general response, because I think it's a worthwhile sort of teaser for future discussions. If this project moves forward, if the agreement is approved, then some number of dollars come into the community. All dollars that come into the community are general fund dollars, and all general fund dollars must be appropriated by town meeting. That's state statute. So it'll come from a recommendation through the regular process of the town manager making a budget recommendation with the board reviewing that, the Finance Committee reviewing it, and ultimately making a recommendation to town meeting. So any dollars, this project or otherwise that come into the general fund are subject to the appropriation of town meeting. That's state statute. That process can be avoided. So I'm not here to describe where any additional dollars would go. I'm just saying that there is a process associated with that, and it's the same process we follow every year through the budget process.
Thank you. Any final comments?
Motion.
Motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn?
Motion made to adjourn by Selectman Noblety, seconded by Selectman Valencourt. All in favor? Aye. All opposed?